Okay, moved by trustee Browski, second by trustee O'Connor, all in favor? Any names? Okay, welcome to the meeting, Dr. Jamil, trusted Jamil, I'll rise for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance, the flag of United States of America, into the republic which stands one nation and without indivisible, with liberties, peace, justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone, this is our second meeting in this village hall, so we're getting used to it. We've got microphones now, I, this is all interesting, and the weather's still warm, so I hope it continues. The first item on the agenda is appointment and swearing in of Megan Conway as the village deputy clerk, so I would like a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by trustee O'Connor.
Second.
Second by trustee Tanucci, I think that's also a voice. So that we have a backup clerk. That's why. Okay, so I believe that is a, a voice vote, all in favor? Any names? Our motion carried, I need to swear you in, Megan, so. We do it in the front, I guess we can do it in the front, we'll make this all official. Okay.
Hi, Megan Conway.
Having been duly appointed to the office of deputy village clerk.
Having been duly appointed of village deputy clerk.
In the village of Long Grove.
In the village of Long Grove.
Illinois.
Illinois.
Do we swear?
Do we swear?
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
I'll support.
Constitution of the state hold on.
In the Constitution.
Duties of this.
I'll gratefully discharge.
My motion's clear here.
Okay, very good.
All right, now we have the homeowners associations, is somebody here from the estates of Oak Hills number two? If you could just rise and tell us who you are and.
Dan will be here.
Or do you have anything to present to us? Do we need to have them use the microphones or?
Use the, go to the podium over there and get the microphone.
Yeah, over there, the podium, if you have something to share with us.
Not that I'm aware of.
So, okay, we need to do that for no reason. Well, Dan mentioned something about a possibility of county assistance or state county assistance for roads, I don't know anything that was discussed here, he just asked if that was still an issue, and I told him I would echo that here. Well, the only thing I can think of is that we're still working through, we have money in the budget for an HOA road paving assistance program. Yeah. And that's something that needs some work, and will be brought before the board at some point this year, but it hasn't yet. Okay, great, thanks, that's all we had. Well, thank you for being here, thanks for what you do, appreciate it. Oak Hills number one, Maggie McCasey? Online, or anything? Okay, no? All right, then it's time for public comment, does anyone have public comment? Oh, Stephen, yes? Well, we need to be able to hear you, if you could just keep it to three minutes, so it'd be appreciated.
And change your timer, there's gonna be a five minute timer.
Did you really? Okay. You said it.
And I'm Steve Sathasi, president of the Country Club Meadows Association, as you know, I want to welcome you as a new board member, you know, appreciate you taking on the service because that's a, that's a big task there, first of all. You know, I like to, you know, keep going on the flock cameras if possible, okay, that's the number one, you know, issue, I think we need to try to keep working on, okay? And I just, I just need to, I'm just coming here tonight just to bring it up to the board again, just to keep it fresh, okay? You know, we don't need to discuss it or anything like that. The other issue is, you know, we talked, we've been talking every meeting that I come here about the group thing, you know what I mean? And really, I mean, this homeowner was just talking about the assistance of the paving, okay? You know, they're really destroying our cul-de-sacs in our, you know, just because we have the vegetarian in the middle of cul-de-sacs. I saw a group pickup truck come by, my wife saw a group pickup truck come by, and he looked a little bit, he didn't stop, but he just drove the cul-de-sac. But now they're, now they're taking off the outer edge now too, on the cul-de-sacs, the inner edge and the outer edge, so. I don't want to be a president of a homeowners association that needs to tell their homeowners that we're gonna have a special assessment of $5,000 to fix private cul-de-sacs that a village vendor, you know, destroyed earlier than needed to be. Okay, and I think that's a big issue, okay, so I just, I don't know if they think it's a big joke or not. I mean, I'm actually probably gonna buy some traffic barricades, and I'm, they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to back out of the cul-de-sac. I don't know if that's legal or not, I mean, I could ask the sheriff or whatever, but I mean, you know, they're gonna have to, they're just gonna have to come in, come in the cul-de-sac, and they're gonna have to get my, walk, walk to get my cans, if you want me to use their services, I think we need to, we need to address this, and I mean, I'm sure on other homeowners associations, maybe people aren't that vigilant and notice this stuff, I take pictures every week, every Monday when I come home, I take a picture of the cul-de-sac to see the deterioration of the cul-de-sac on Mondays. So I've got pictures sort of like the last 13 weeks since Groot's been a carrier. And I mentioned that before they even came to be a carrier for Long Grove, okay? But I don't want to have to tell my homeowners that, you know, to repave the roads is gonna be $350,000, and we gotta repave them next year because of deteriorations. So I just wish that we could try to not fall on dead ears on that, if Groot wants to meet with me and drive the subdivision, they're more than welcome to do it, but, you know, I mean, if you're gonna pave the lot over here and you got Groot coming here to pick up your thing, you'll see in the summertime when it's 100 degrees, your new pavement is gonna, you're gonna have divots where the truck is at. So I'm sure Long Grove's not gonna appreciate that after a year of brand-new pavement if you're gonna pave the parking lot, you know what I mean? So I just wish they'd take that into consideration, I'm just trying to, I don't want the homeowners to be shocked. Okay, so I'm bringing it up.
We did have the route manager drive your neighborhood a few weeks ago, maybe a month ago at this point, and fouled the driver, and they, they said it seemed fine, they were gonna relay to the driver to make sure that they were driving carefully through there, and to make sure that they weren't kind of hitting that edge of the curb, I don't know, it sounds like that might not be happening, we can reiterate, and maybe I'll have them contact you as the.
Yeah, I mean, this week he took, this week they took down a tree branch. So, I mean, I know trees grow, but, you know, I just, you know, I don't want it to be a big major thing a year or two years down the line, so.
I do have another, I have another question, is there a better spot to put the garbage cans to, so that they're?
I mean, you could put them at the end of the circle, you know, I mean, you know, but the thing about is, and, you know, in the winter time, you know, the plow is gonna plow the garbage cans over, you know, so it's, you know, at the end of the driveway is the best situation, you know, we have the cul-de-sacs that have the, you know, greenery in the middle of them, you know, a lot of the cul-de-sacs do not have greenery in the middle of it, which is a, which, you know, is an easier task, I think.
Can I ask, can I ask something else? Could, could, Chris, could you go out there with Groot? And, and with you, and just walk, walk through and come up with any solutions, if there are any?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to have a solution to it, you know, I mean, I just, I just don't want to be the homeowner president to tell these people they're gonna have a $5,000 assessment, you need $350,000 to refound the streets.
There might just be practical challenges with this.
Yeah, but we, can we at least do that? Would that be?
But I just, I just want to bring it up and put it on record that I've been here and talked about it, and that I don't want to waste any more of your time, you know what I mean?
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for your great service, guys.
Thanks for being here. All right, other public comment? Go ahead. Can I ask you just to go up to the podium so we can hear you? I know this is all new microphones and.
Good evening, everyone, and we are here from the Lake Eleanora homeowners association, and located in Indian Creek, right? Diamond Lake Road.
I know where you're at, can you just give us your names too?
My name is Russell Shoyub.
Okay, thank you.
And we have the representative of the HOA who did in the committee, created committee for our lake to preserve the lakes, and nature, yeah, there was the nature created, wanted to show the picture of this looks from our properties, it's like in the Swan families, there are other family lives there, and current association, they wants to do something with this, and that they are wanting to railroad to accept the more water into this water body to have the properly control, whatever they call in the water flow for this. We lived there for the 15 years, we haven't seen any floods or anything, just a nice and peaceful life, and we wanted to see if the village can do something to prevent this, because Long Grove is now like in a very good conservancy area where we can enjoy our nature, where we can enjoy a nice and peaceful life. And also the second question I want to ask after that was about the noise ordinance. The seven o'clock in the morning, the lawnmowers company, they come in and they're using the machine, nothing wrong with this, but the people sometimes wants to have the rest, like in that from eight o'clock, if it is possible, we'll be to move this noise ordinance.
So I think, I don't know if it's Jeff or you, Chris, there's been some work on the drainage from the pond, right? Yes, Jeff.
I can, so this was a, a drainage improvement project that was two-pronged, it was a grant, I mean, they've applied to the village for the, to help with the grant.
Yes.
To give them that, and it's to improve the outflow and also have the inflow come from the Canadian National underneath the railroad tracks, which was in the original subdivision designs, so there is a right.
Yeah, we know that, and I've been watching this carefully all the rainy season, and there's the structure exists where it's normally functioned like it's supposed to be, the one, the regular cleanup is needed there, but nothing was done for the years, and the Joseph was doing kindly, he's not even the duty, but then goodwill, he was applying some bacteria to keep this water flow normal condition, but the HOA meetings, and they're always like, we tried to raise the voices, there was like, and they cut it off of the majority being people chosen somehow, and they do not want to listen to residents over there. And so they are concerned, like if this village can step in and it just preserved this water body was created, and to give the wildlife and the normal undisturbed things, whatever happens, because the railroad, they want to dump the road, the water, and the water is industrial water, nobody knows what's going to happen with the wildlife. And how is this going to work?
Not industrial, it's just coming underneath, it's the natural flow that it's taking right now, it's being, it's actually a drainage improvement project to help regulate.
The railroad has it in the industrial water, it's not, no testing been provided or anything, like enough quality is the water going to be.
This water is the same on the other, in your.
Well, we all see it, so like some diesel and other things flow, go going from the, from the containers, they, they rolling on the roads and some other things. But we asking like for the more testing to see it, and the possibility also like to have the a little bit more control of the village and especially the conservancy on that.
Also another issue is that, that we have concern. The board, which won basically, the residents vote on this by a slim margin, by a couple votes only, basically continued with the plan that is gonna be lowering the water level by about a foot. Now, when you lower the water about a foot, especially the southern end of the pond, is gonna be basically mostly muck, and that's gonna be innocent, gonna create innocent smells, giving mosquitoes, and it's gonna affect the property values. And so, and that's also a concern about that, so really we are, as a matter of fact, one of the residents already sent a cease and desist letter to, to the board, and maybe a copy of it was sent to the village, and, you know, so there could be a pending lawsuit that we don't know who the parties will be to it, and so we really would like to, really, we are not against the project, we're trying to, we are for the project but doing it right, not basically damaging it to some residents, but fixing it to a few others. There, we, we have only one home or two homes that have, that are like point of floods, I think.
Well, because.
One home that can be fixed otherwise, you know, so that's other thing, so we looking at this, it's gonna be damaging to a lot of residents, yeah, it's other.
So, so online is Jeff Fuller, he raised his hand, I think he's your HOA president? Jeff, did you want to share something with us?
Actually, not to speak to any of this, it was more just a question for the village at this point. We'd gone through the permitting process, and really just wanted to touch base on the current status. The last that we'd heard was that the engineering review had been completed, but then final approval was pending receipt of the, the recorded easements on some of the lots for a stormwater management easement. Provided those, and at this point, just, you know, that we'd reached out, and then CN had also reached out, the railway had reached out just to see what the status of the permit approval was.
Hey Jeff, I just want to jump in right there, just to kind of reiterate the email that I sent to you either late last week or early this week. The receipt of those reported easements is not a condition of the permit issuance. We'll just make that a condition, like I said in my email, of the final project approval before it's closed out. Our office has reviewed that, and I know that you were in communication with Jill regarding the permit issuance, so she should be able to get back to you on that.
Okay. Okay, so my hearing that proposed solution, you're not supportive of it?
No, we're not supporting, we asking to reinstate, the committee was canceled by the HOA.
I think we should go back to the drawing board, and I think it's basically try to, go to do it in a way that is not damaging to anybody in the, of our residents, that's all.
Jeff, I mean, I don't know, is that something you could?
We've been hashing itself for about two or three years now, and so we're well past that stage.
Got it.
That's a decision, but it's not ours.
Yeah, so here's the interesting thing, the, you know, we process the application, I don't know how we mediate this because it's your HOA, we don't have any authority over it. So that's our challenge. That's our challenge.
Well, it's not the HOA, it's one person, it's the HOA of everybody who lives there.
Correct.
Yeah, and we asking you like to reinstate at least the commission, the committee, so the people who was in the board, and they will have at least like second opinion stability to raise the voices and says, yes, we agree or not agree with that, so because there is like, sounds like it's monopoly decision there is coming up.
We had a water committee that the board decided to just cancel it, I mean, it was just like, I understand this is an association issue, but, you know, it's.
I mean, the only thing we can do is, I mean, I don't know, Jeff, is that something you'd be willing to sit down and have a meeting with the residents or something?
It's, no, so we've, we've had a litany of meetings at this point, we've had a special vote for, for the special assessment, and then also a recount, not recount, excuse me, a ratification of that vote, both times it passed consistent with, with our bylaws. And so, yes, we've, we've got a handful of residents who don't want to see the pond, the detention pond lowered anywhere from where it is right now, but at, from, from my perspective, what we have right now is a failed system that is only operating based on an overflow into an emergency spillway. And so you have a system that's, that's failed, that I think people have gotten used to, and we're looking to restore some measure of functionality to that system, we're not bringing it all the way back down to the original design. And so we've, we really threaded the needle between what's acceptable by the village, by the county, consistent with, with the village and county ordinances, while also trying to maintain that, that pool as high as we possibly can, while also not flooding anybody out.
And so it sounds like there's a solution being worked out, I don't know.
So we received the application from the HOA and processed it according with our normal procedures.
Right.
Does any water quality test was submitted with application?
So, okay. Have to ask Jeff, who?
Jeffrey.
Jeff Perry.
Oh, yeah, nor was one required, so they had been insisting that the railway provide a water quality test of runoff from the, from the agriculture field to the north. So CN has said unconditionally that they will not provide any water quality tests. The county didn't require one, the village didn't require one.
Well, we all live there, we need to know what they're going to dump it there.
That's gonna be coming to our world order, I mean, we want to know what kind of water, 99% probably be okay, but we need to know.
And we all drink in the water from the, from inside there, from the dirt, yeah, we need to know what they're going to put in our drinking water. It's very simple, we're not asking for anything else, but we're just asking to hold on, and that, and to put the more testing, if it is at least acceptable level of the, for the drinking water by the cure.
I'm trying to come up with a solution here, I'm not.
Well, just to add on this, this is Jeff Perry. Can you guys hear me or no?
Yeah, we can, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to add to this, that you've got Lake Eleanora Estates, you've got the railroad tracks just to the north, and the majority of the water that is coming under the railroad tracks is from the vacant property north of the railroad tracks, which is currently owned by the Illinois Department of Transportation, and we've had our share of challenges working with the Illinois Department of Transportation on different items over the years. So I throw that out there, they are the landowner, and I agree that, you know, why would the Canadian National Railroad be in charge or responsible for testing that water from their property, and just to kind of add, the watershed development ordinance does not require stormwater testing of any sort from naturally occurring stormwater, which is what is draining from the I dot property north of the railroad tracks.
Okay, I'm trying to figure out a solution here, I don't know if it makes sense, I mean, could we ask Jeff to go out there, meet with the, with you and the HOA president, just one last time to talk through your concerns, I mean, is that a possibility? I'm trying to figure out a solution here.
It's, I've been doing this for two years with, with this, we've had so many, we've had so many meetings at this point. And we've, we've finally gotten to the, this project after three years, nearly to the point of construction. And we've, we've taken every effort that we can to balance this project to, to try to address all the concerns of everyone, including maintaining that pool as high as possible. When, when there's, when you have homeowners who don't want to see any work done at all, that they want to see nothing done. To me, this is simply gonna stall the project just that much more, that there's, there's no ground that can be found, because what they're looking for is to have nothing done.
Are we gonna have to take this offline, because this will go the whole night, and we don't have a solution here, so.
And I said something, with respect to, for one thing, we want the project to be done, we want the proper drain to be done, but the thing is, we want it to be done properly, and the thing is, water quality report is extremely important, I understand Jeff said that it's because of the north properties, the farms and so on, really, they are the ones who dumping some chemicals or whatever, fertilizers, whatever costs the well, that's not our responsibility, they're supposed to be working in and out with their neighbors, and then tell us what quality report. By, by them refusing to give us a water quality report, actually raises a red flag, so maybe they're gonna be dumping some chemicals into our pond, that's gonna be dangerous to us, and that's why they're not telling this, so I want to know about.
Well, thank you for your comment, we're gonna have to take it offline, I'm not sure where we go to help out, but thank you, appreciate you being here.
Okay, and the second question was about the noise ordinance. Is anyhow we can like, oh, just to, just to notify us.
You want to change it from 7:00 AM start to 8:00 AM start?
At least, yeah, maybe, I'm sure it's like 99% of the residents would be agreeing that. We are a very unique town, we are here located on the very north side of the Chicago, just for the, been very known, like in the, we used to not even have a street names, it was the RFDs, the road free delivery streets, and we are here just to enjoy it, and that, but in seven o'clock in the morning, sometimes even before, you know, the lawnmowers machine, they chasing around your houses, but the neighbor, along the properties, it's kind of very disturbing things. I'm thinking it's gonna be a benefit to everyone who lives in this village.
I thought it was before 7:00 AM, okay, got it.
Discuss this regarding the golf course.
Yeah, that's a different scenario, yeah, that was before, early in the morning. Yeah, this is 7:00 AM.
They have to follow the same.
But they were doing it five in the morning, anytime it got light up.
Right, and didn't we say seven?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, seven's our ordinance, I guess we're saying. I don't know that we're gonna, I don't know that we can impact that one, that's one, that would be a village-wide decision. I mean, again, that would be something that you could probably do something at your HOA level too, if you wanted.
This problem with our HOA, they're doing the only secret meetings most of the time, and we have two meetings in a year, we're just bringing some pizza in the, like in the discussion, beside that, they're always like in the other table discussion about the pond movement. I lived there for the 15 years, like almost, and I didn't see any problem, this needs to be so radically, just go there and then dig at this, and that was all, the any testing, anything else, and just because they have like power of the, use the HOA money, and use the project to get the property just like in the, free of the water. But we appreciate if the village and the people who are in the board will take care of this, and because, like I says, we are in a unique village, and if you know, this for the many conservancy we have here, and our park lake is also, it's a, it's conservative, you can see that, like in all over the sides, do not touch, do not disturb. And this is, we'll go, going to kill the whole wildlife if they will do this.
Thank you for your comment, if we can come up and help out, we will, so thank you. Okay, any other public comment online or in person?
I had a question and a public comment, so a question on that subject, doesn't Jeff Perry's organization and their stormwater management analysis of Long Grove go out and sample water? I mean, is this something that we could use a test point, or use this location as a test point to pull some?
Oh, it's part of our, whatever the, yeah, the stormwater management, whatever that name of the acronym is, yeah.
Right.
Jeff?
FYI, I don't know if that's.
Yeah, yeah, Chris, you are correct, annually we have to test 20% of the outfalls in the village as part of the municipal separate stormwater system, MS4 for short.
MS4, thank you.
Yep.
All right, so can we test theirs, part of our MS4?
Um, we can, you know, add that to, as an outfall, again, the pipe doesn't exist today going into that lake, so we can certainly add it, and it will be on that testing rotational schedule.
Okay, thank you, public comment?
Yeah, public comment, um, in light of the violent tragedy that took place a week and a half ago with the assassination of Mr. Kirk, I'd like to do just two things tonight, I'd like to say thank you to our law enforcement. I think the Lake County Sheriff does a phenomenal job keeping us safe, and working with us to make sure our residents are protected and safe, so Keith, I wish you'd just extend to your team, just a big thank you from me personally, and I assume from a lot of the board members as well, so thank you for that. And, I'm sorry, huh, can I just finish one more thought, or, it's, it's okay. The second thing I wanted to mention is just say thank you to this board, tell the board members and the staff, we don't always agree on things, but we always find a way to walk away as friends and communicate, and I truly believe everybody's doing this for the good intentions of the village of Long Grove, and just want to say thank you to all you guys too. So thank you for that.
Thank you for what you do, was there another comment back there?
Well, I live up on the Indian Creek Road.
Yep.
And it's 30 miles speed limit, and usually people don't pay attention to that. Like videos, like we have in Chicago.
Yeah, unfortunately, we're not allowed to do that by state law, that's our issue, but what we could do, and is move our radar sign around, which trustee O'Reilly has asked us to do, and she's no longer with us, so we could do that, so, and I would like to do that based on the fact that she asked us to do that, so.
Yeah, thank you, I've tried to sometimes, I'm trying to take a picture, okay?
I mean, I don't know why, the city of Chicago is allowed to do that, and we're not allowed to do it by state law, so, I don't know, it's interesting. Thank you. Okay, that brings us, end of public comment, I hope. Public safety reports? All right, thank you, then that brings us to the consent agenda, there's a variety of items on here, and I'll just kind of go through them really quick. Items can be pulled, but the approval and ratification of the payment of bills, this is the August 2025 bill warrant, approval of the treasures report, the August treasures report, approval of the minutes, the regular meeting minutes of the August 26, 25 board meeting, approval, we had an executive session that same night, so approval of executive session minutes, and August 20, the dates are 26, yep, I'm just looking, approval of the special event permit application for Oktoberfest at the Buffalo Creek Brewery, approval of a special event permit. for Oktoberfest at the Buffalo Creek Brewery, approval of a special event permit for the downtown for the Health Fest, approval of special event permit for the Ghost Walk. They do that every year. An approval of a raffle for Woodlawn Middle School PTO. That's what's on the consent agenda. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve or remove anything or have any questions?
Have questions. The Health Fest on on their application.
Yeah, can you speak into the microphone, Dan?
On their application, is that better? Closer, better? Can you hear? People usually say be quiet. Okay, the Health Health Fest on the application. If I interpret it correctly, they're going to have it on the grass in front of the shop on Robert Parker Coffin, like twenty vendors. And I don't understand how twenty vendors fit there. Does anybody?
That's the covered bridge part.
Yeah.
You gotta address that? Yeah.
It's in the park. I thought it was, I thought it was from the sidewalk to the curb. I'm like, okay, got it. Thank you.
Not closing any streets here.
That's fine. And and there was a map in our packet and I couldn't visualize it. So thanks. Okay.
But there's gonna be some tents in front of your shop there, right?
And it was mainly, I guess, because of safety issues, you know, but there is a stop sign there. So even if they are coming at it quickly, there is a bridge and a stop sign that.
Let's not talk about the bridge.
Same, same topic, different question.
Sure.
Um, was the Health Fest on the original schedule of events for the village for this year? That was submitted and we requested the downtown owners to submit earlier this year, so we didn't have any conflicts.
And why is it in the original list? It was added requested to be added.
Hey, may I ask a question? Why are we doing this?
Well, we have a new business, they're Long Grove Residents, and they came up with this concept of doing it. And it's the first one ever. So I don't know if you want to explain more about what you're trying to accomplish? That would be great.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Yeah, and our goal here is to support the businesses, because to to your point, Oktoberfest wasn't on our original, the original submissions. And that's held every year. So we got to treat everyone the same way. If we're looking at this, but our end goal should always be support the businesses as long as it's, you know, reasonable and makes sense.
All right, with that, any other questions? If not, does somebody want to make a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, moved by trustee O'Connor.
Second.
Second by trustee Tanucci. That's a roll call vote.
Okay, trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Trustee Borowski?
Aye.
Trustee Gaten?
Aye.
Trustee Harris? Not here, right? And then trustee Dr. Jamil?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Thank you. Thanks, everyone. All right. The in space, the invasive specie grant application, there were two of them submitted. They're in your board packet. Kent, did you, you usually review these, don't you, or did you?
I did, and I attended the CSCC meeting where they were discussed and where the recommendation was made.
Does anyone have any questions? Or if not, does somebody want to make a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay.
Moved by trustee Tanucci, seconded by trustee O'Connor. Roll call, please.
Uh, trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Borowski?
Aye.
Trustee Gaten?
Aye.
Trustee Jamil?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried.
We get more frequent coverage of this grant and in in our newsletters and whatever, because
Wasn't it in the newsletter?
I think it is. It is. It's it's just, I I know a resident who lives close to my house and they've been working on two, three acres of buckthorn for a couple of years now. And I said, you know, there's a grant out there. She had no idea.
Send it to the HOA presidents to distribute to all there.
They don't have one. You know, so it's a one-street community and whatever, but but and it is in the newsletter. I'm just, maybe we could hit on it.
On social media and stuff.
Yeah. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Beth Judea at fifty three hundred Illinois eighty three has a house on their property that was there before the temple was built. And they're going, it's it's in disrepair. I don't know if anyone, I visited and took pictures of it over the weekend. It looks like a nineteen sixty's style house. And it's, they want to waive the hundred and twenty day waiting period for demolition. So I don't know if anyone has questions. I still think even if we do this, it still has to be noticed publicly for twenty one days.
Yes, with posting on the property, two weeks.
We have, we have twenty one days to do the notice. The notice has to be up for two weeks.
Two weeks, okay, got it. So, any questions?
All the same questions they always have.
I know, I mean, I'm anticipating it already knew, so.
Yeah, you know, it's same same question. So has the sheriff signed off? I, I mean, I've not even been asking about the historical society, but has the sheriff's office signed off to make sure that nothing bad happened in that house that we might be destroying evidence on or anything like that?
We can have them take a look at it.
Yeah, as far as I tried to proactively address the historical significance, and I looked at the building and I'm like, I mean, I guess, I mean, it's built in the sixties, but I didn't look like a, did you see the building?
Yeah, I, yeah, I was actually surprised. I had no idea there was a building back there.
Yeah.
So, and it's still landlocked parcel, though. So what happens next? They're knocking the building down to do anything in particular or just because it's no longer needed?
It's like a safety concern at this point, so they're just looking to take it down. It's all like
Well, I read the narrative, but it wasn't very specific on what a safety concern is, right?
It might come back in the future, but they haven't applied for any new structure to be built.
So this is the first one for Chris to walk through. And so when I read it, I started asking all the questions. So and I anticipated the questions you were gonna ask, too. So I tried. Yeah, I thought it might be in the board pack and it wasn't.
So does it make sense for us, again, to change our code on this particular matter or not, to make it maybe a little bit more of a checkmark kind of issue? You know, sheriff signs off, historical society signs off. You know, staff signs off and away we go. I, it just seems like the same issue keeps coming up. I think this is what, three or four times?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
You know, it just seems like we ought to just make it a little bit
Process.
Yeah.
Right, I agree. Yeah, I was first one for Chris and I'm like, I'm asking all these questions. He doesn't have the answers to it. I'm like, okay, I'll just wait for the board. I mean, we got some of the answers anyways, so.
So the application. So we need, you're looking for motions.
I am.
I'll be happy to make that motion, but I'm not sure what the wording is.
On a subject to sheriff.
Okay, I think
Sheriff review. Did you get that? Okay, moved by trustee Borowski, seconded by
Second.
By trustee O'Connor. I still, is that a roll call still? Vic, help me. Alexander? Roll call, do a roll call. Can't, can't, can't lose on that one.
Uh, trustee Borowski?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor? Trustee Gaten?
Aye.
Trustee Jamil?
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci?
Okay, motion carried. All right, so we have two items here. And Jim and Paul, I see you here, because these are both regarding your proposed development. Ordinance twenty twenty five zero dash thirteen, amending the zoning code. This is a text amendment to the village code regarding colleges or theological seminary uses. This is in Salem Lake, and I don't know if Karen wants to help set this up. Magnolina's here. And then there's a second one that actually is the rezoning of it, right? So who's gonna help set this up?
Karen, do you want to start?
Sure. We do have a PowerPoint that we did for the Plan Commission CBA, but I don't, unless we need to.
Does anyone need a PowerPoint presentation? I think we're all familiar with this building. It's the old CFI Industries building. It's embarrassing that it's, you know, how damaged it's gotten. So why don't you just take us through it and thank you.
It's a thirty eight ninety Salem Lake Drive on a about a twenty nine, twenty seven acre parcel. And the building was built in nineteen seventy five and seventy six for CF Industries. They moved out in two thousand and seven and it was bought, bought and sold several times over the years for proposed projects that none of which got off the ground. And as everyone's aware, it's been a target of break-ins, vandalism and has really fallen into disrepair.
Move the microphone.
So Quentin Road Bible College, Quentin Road.
Oh, we have microphones now, sorry. Salt things.
About that.
Yeah.
Quentin Road Baptist Church and Dayspring Bible College became interested in the property in twenty twenty four for for a campus of the of a Bible college. They currently have one in Mundaline, I think it's unincorporated Mundaline. And they've got about eighty, eighty people enrolled there and eighty students, then fifty five of them are on campus at that location. Quentin Road Baptist Church and Dayspring Bible College made an agreement with Hobby Lobby, who has a program where they buy distressed properties, hold them for a year and a day, and then turn them over to, and they have like a dollar a month lease or something like that, then they turn them over to to institutions such as, such as the David Dayspring Bible College. So they currently are the are the owner of these of these properties and they would, we would anticipate that 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 they would turn the, you know, the ownership over in next, next spring, like in, I think, April or so. What they would like to do is restore the the building, restore the the exterior, which is has a lot of broken windows and do an interior, build out of the interior in two phases, which, because it's such a large building, to contain classroom space, cafeteria and kitchen, some some dorm rooms and a couple of staff quarters and and then, you know, just mostly academic space. Ultimately, this is after both phases, which will take some years to complete for the for the interior buildout. Ultimately, they expect to have up to hundred and eighty students and four to six staff people living on campus. And most of their students, many of their students do not own cars, so the traffic impact, they did a traffic study, very, very minor, very minor. The site would essentially essentially remain unchanged. There's no expansion planned. There's some some minor site improvements, but that's, that that's not a focus of the project. It's mostly the building itself. The Plan Commission had a public hearing on September second. And about ten people or so were present and all of them spoke in favor of the project. They're they're just, they're relieved that something's going in there and that, you know, it's already, it's already been secured just by the presence of of the of the of the of the Bible college staff and folks on site who are who are watching out for it. And the Plan Commission found that the proposal met all the standards for a special use permit. And they voted unanimously in favor of the text amendment to define a college seminary use and allow it as a special use in the O District, Office District, which is the only area that zoned office in in the village. They also voted unanimously in favor of the of a rezoning, which just makes the Office District portion contiguous with the parcel. Because it was a strange split, split zoning classification before. So this is just cleaning that up. And unanimously in favor of the special use itself. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So can I just procedurally, so the first thing is the text amendment? And then second would be the rezoning. Now, the question I have is is this like, they still have to go through all the approvals for the redesign of the building or is it all?
So to, like
Yes.
Permitting?
This is Vic. We we have in the, in the special use permit ordinance a requirement that they have to go through all the steps for permitting. So this is only giving them authorization for the use based on the the basic plans, but they still, those are zoning plans. They then have to still go through the building code process.
Okay, so that's what we're doing tonight, which sets up the, for them to formally apply for everything else that needs to be done to convert it into the Bible college, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Questions?
I have questions.
Sure.
Always have questions.
Trustee O'Connor, please.
Thank you. Vic, I'm glad to hear your voice. Somewhere in this, in this ordinance or suggestion here, it talks about, it mentions, it uses the phrase modest scale. I don't, I don't know if you have a finder for something like that. I didn't write the page down, but I do have other questions if you're gonna take your eye to look. Ian?
It's actually in one of the recitals to the text amendment.
Okay. It just seemed like that phrase is pretty open-ended.
Well, I, I think it's not part of the legislative language. It is part of the intent. I don't, you know, I don't think that the intent was to have University of Illinois relocate to Long Grove and have a sprawling campus with football stadiums and basketball stadiums and the like. So the modest scale was really to to put in qualitative terms what we're looking at. I mean, I think if you look at what Dayspring is proposing, it is very modest. It's staying within the confines of an existing building. It's not having many of the facilities that a, you know, a, a lot of colleges have. And the language there was really sort of to offer that as an expectation, not as a, not as a strict requirement.
Can I, I had this underlined, too. Subject to the foregoing, there will be no changes to the height or bulk of the building without further village approval of the board. You saw that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Right, and that that one's in the special use permit ordinance, that language.
Okay.
Okay, and my other question is, I think the, it's anticipated, I think Karen said, two hundred and eighty students approximately living on campus.
One eighty eventually and and four to six staff.
One eighty?
Yes.
So we're distinguishing between the number of students enrolled versus number of students living on campus.
Ah, okay, all right. So and and these are, these are just clarifications, basically, at this point that I'm looking for, where in paragraph five, it says limits on on-campus housing. It may be comprised of dwelling units and dormitory rooms on campus. Sleeping, no cooking, blah, 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 get that. No more than seventy five percent of the gross floor area shall be devoted to on-campus housing unless improved by special permit. Seventy five percent of one hundred and twenty five thousand square feet is a lot of, a lot of, a lot of sleeping rooms. So am I interpreting that correctly?
They're actually way below the seventy five They're actually way below the 75% threshold. But the text amendment would allow that and let's, if you take a close look at that language, that's not saying dormitory rooms. It's talking about, I gotta get it in front of me.
It's five, if five A, if that helps.
Right. On campus housing. And so part of the housing aspect of that includes like the cafeteria. And so the cafeteria and the rooms and the like have to stay under 75%. This plan is well within those limitations, but that's what that is intended to do.
Well, that's not what it says. It, it, no more than 75% shall be devoted to on campus housing and the cafeteria is included in housing.
You, for housing, you need to have facilities for eating. And so some of those are going to be within the, the dwelling units available for the married and married student and staff, but the dormitory rooms will not have capacity for food service. That's why they need the, the cafeteria, the dining hall.
I, I understand that. But then it goes on to say, no more than 20% of on campus housing can be devoted to dwelling units. Dwelling units are separate from dormitories, right?
Well, the dwelling units are a subset of the housing. It is, that's the, the married student housing, the staff housing. And those do have facilities for, for kitchenettes.
So is there a concern that it's too much space for housing? Is that what your concern is?
It just, it seems like it 20% is 25,000 square feet. That's just, and, and it's a big building. It's, it's a big site. I, I don't have any problem with that. I don't have any problem with dormitories. I'm just trying to understand.
Well, let's, if I, I'm sorry for interrupting Rita. If, we, we need to make sure that we're looking separately at the text amendment, which is where these limitations are set forth versus the special use permit. The special use permit confines everything to the attached plans. And that's why I've been saying that what's proposed is far less than that. And they can't vary from the attached plans.
I see, I see.
Without coming back to the board. But it gives them, we won't have to change the text next time if they want to convert, you know, some area from a room closet to a, to a dormitory room or whatever, you know, whatever it might be.
Sure. Yeah, I get it. So.
Oh, you know, we're kind of working, we're, we're trying to set the outer limits, but the special use permit sets the specific requirements for this particular proposal.
Okay.
And they won't be able to change that without coming back to the board. And that would have to go through the whole public notice hearing and board consideration process.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I got it. I got it now. Thank you.
Yeah. It's, it's a little hard when you're consuming it all at once. I'm sorry for that.
Okay. My last question is regarding the traffic study. One, one has been done currently.
Yes.
But I remember the days when 22 was two lanes and that building was fully occupied.
Yes, I remember the days.
They had to have
A cop.
Traffic police out there morning and afternoon to direct in and out traffic and blah, blah, blah. So how, how does, and, and I know that it, this is not in, we're not anticipating the entire building being full of employees or students or whatever. So what the, the traffic, the, the traffic study says there's no problem currently, correct?
Even at build out, they even looked at that build out and there, there's, there are going to be so many fewer people coming to and going from than compared to, you know, the, when it was CF Industries. It's a fraction of the amount. And also anybody who's coming to the campus is, a lot of them are going to be coming from, oh, what's the, what's the other location? They've got a, they've got an, the Quentin Road Bible, Quentin Road Baptist Church is, they've got a shuttle bus.
Yeah.
Take them to and from there and because a lot of the students don't have cars. So it's, it's just, it's just a fraction that they have, they have 400 parking spots out there now that, you know, there, there's just going to be no, very few of them are going to be utilized.
Sure. Yeah. Parking is no, no concern. It's in and out.
But I think, I think the point with the parking is that while at full build out, the building may once again have a bustle to it, the parking lot is still going to be largely a ghost town. There's just not, there's just not going to be the utilization of it compared to CF Industries. And yes, I, I remember missing a hearing or being late for a hearing once because of that very traffic. So I have keen recollections of it, but I don't anticipate based on the traffic study and based on the, the plans and the expected population that we're going to come anywhere near the traffic volumes that we saw back when CF was in its heyday.
Well, on the other hand, I hope they have enough students that they do. But, okay, understood. I'm finished. Thank you.
Other comments, questions?
Similar questions. And I'm glad Vic's on the line as well. The 420 parking spaces are a lot of parking spaces and I'm thinking about the opposite side of that. I'm thinking about special events that the, the college may hold. So Vic, what kind of limitations, once, I mean, once this thing goes to a church, if you will, I think it becomes, we kind of lose some control over special events, don't we? Or what, what, what do we, what can we control or not control in the future? What if they wanted to have a, a church fest instead of a health fest? I mean, what, how do we, how do we control or limit that kind of high intensity use, especially with their beautiful grounds over there, right? They could have some great outdoor events. Is, do we lose control over that at all? Or how do we, how do we mitigate my concern?
Well, we, we, well, first of all, the use is not for church. The use is for educational uses. They are allowed as we, we permit in our code for special events, but we also have procedures for getting special event permits. So, you know, that's one of the tools that we have to make sure that this doesn't turn into something very different and unexpected. I, I don't have any misgivings if we want to in the special use permit in, include a specific reference to special events to which, you know, that, that are not limited to the college enrollees, faculty, staff and invitees have to get a, you know, have to get a special event permit. I think that's how our code works, but there might be value in putting that in the special use ordinance specifically.
Well, it seems like we want that just to make sure. And I, I think the petitioner and the church is very well respected by me. I know some of the members personally, and I know they're all great upstanding people, but that's what we thought when CF built a big building that's now in disrepair too. So, you know, I guess just concerned about making sure that we are protecting the residents from any unexpected events, you know, concerts in the park or whatever at five o'clock in the afternoon when rush hour hits, you know, that kind of thing. Or well into the evening hours and noise and all that, right? So I'm just a little bit concerned about that. I had a couple more.
Can we, can we conclude on that? Whatever you want on the board be okay with and would the church be all right with that kind of a clause in there that just basically says that if there is a special event, whatever that size is, Vic, help us with the language.
Yeah, I, I can craft some language while you all are talking about it, but if, I want to make sure that that's where you want to go.
Well, yeah, I just want to make sure that the rest of the board wants to do that because you asked that question. Now, if I understand correctly, it's, we just, you know, it's filling out a form and then saying how you would handle police, how you would, you know, because you're going to have maybe, I don't know, a thousand people there, right? And how are you going to manage the traffic flow ins and out? And what are you going to do? That kind of thing is what I believe you're getting at. Something big, not something small.
Yeah.
Music.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So what is your current village process for especially that like?
Well, you heard health fest.
I know, is that in public? Is that on public market, public area in kind of private property older than that, without that firms?
You have. We have private property that's doing events. Yeah, they do.
Over 250 people.
What class of, why that has a special event?
Roughly of amount of people. So over 250 people. And then if there's like outdoor amplified music.
Yeah. And the reason I'm asking is because this is something that's common. And if you're voting tonight on that, it would be nice also that it's not something we're anticipating. We would love to host things for the community. Ever. So we, we too want to help in those areas, but we also, I, I disdain paperwork and bureaucracy. But I know that helps keep everyone happy, community too. By my, by making us to not have to worry about that. But for 50 threshold, that's a large amount of people. That's still formally theirs.
Actually, I think it'd be kind of nice to have concerts on weekends that, like they have in Libertyville and, and everywhere else. I, I think what residents object to is heavy metal, you know, and, and we'll first decide of this room and no tweeters, you know, use an old phrase, but actually that would be a very nice use. I don't know, fundraising or graduations. They've got plenty of parking.
Well, maybe while you're asking your next question, Vic could come back with some recommended language that would put every one of these, including you all. So. All right. Keep going.
If, if, if you want, I have something that you can listen to while we are still on this topic, if, if that's a good.
Sure. Go ahead, Vic.
I would insert between paragraph D, relief from district requirements and the, the subsection that was fees and costs. A new section, which would be E, everything else renumbered or relettered, special events. It would read activities on the property shall be for educational purposes only and limited to students, faculty, staff and their guests unless a special event permit is issued by the village board in accordance with the requirements of the village code.
Okay. I mean.
I guess our only issue is that our old students that are already there, living there, all of that, I guess that's just, you know, go outside and kind of.
No, that wouldn't be a.
So this is just extra people that would be coming in that are.
You're having an event.
Yeah. Graduation's fine because I presume the people will be invited. You know, a, a student activity is fine, but if it becomes, you know, Taylor Swift comes to Day Spring, that's a different issue.
I'll deliver everything.
We would want tickets.
Yeah. More than just the public are invited and something.
Okay. Thanks Vic. While I still have your thinking cap on, section five, letter D. No gas connection capable of serving an oven located, shall be located in any dormitory room or college or theological seminary. That doesn't preclude electric energy that can power a gas or an electric stove, right? So should we modify that or clarify that a little bit?
Um, this was actually, this is sort of beyond my expertise, but we did make some inquiries about this. And a lot of, you know, small stove units could actually work on, you know, regular current that you would have in a accessible to a room. So we didn't find a good answer to that, but we have regulations that say they can't do it. We simply don't have construction limitations that were as helpful in that regard.
I don't know what that means, but okay.
Well, I, I mean, we, we can certainly say no gas lines. That's something, they don't need gas lines, you know, but for kitchen facilities. But like there wasn't the ability to say you can't have more than 120 amps or something like that, because you could serve a, you know, a small stove and oven unit, refrigerator on those if you get the right, you know, the, the right equipment. So that seemed to be a, an unhelpful standard to try to implement. Instead, we did it by the definitions. If you look at five in the main portion before the, the A, B, C and D. We specifically say lacking cooking facilities. But as the belts and suspenders, as best as we could get the belt around the waist of this one, we put in the limitation on gas connections.
So we do say lacking cooking facilities, except for a single device for warming food. That could be a hot pot, that could be.
Hot plate, microwave. Yeah.
So should we put a limitation on current draw 10 amps, under 20 volts, something like that? That would prohibit an actual stove.
15.
15 is the outlet.
15 is the outlet.
Of course, if you're allowing 15 into 15 outlet, you're going to be tripping breakers. That's why I said 10 or 12, but whatever.
Again, this was something that we did confer with some of the folks in the building, in the building group, the, in SafeBuild. And, you know, there, there just wasn't a, a good bright line standard that we were able to come up with.
So this is a safety issue. I mean, would this be like the fire department regulating this or something like that? You know, I mean, because you're.
This would be something that we'd be looking at in the building plans. You know, certainly if they came in with a gas line, we could say no. I, I think insofar as, you know, as, as the electrical, that's just not going to be an easy thing to to regulate from a construction perspective, but it would be on an inspection basis that if we inspect and we find that, that would be identified as a violation.
Are you worried about it?
I'd like to move on.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I'll.
Part of the problem is simply that the appliances these days can, you know, are, are able to accommodate all different kinds of circumstances. So they've become far more nimble. And as a result, our ability to, to have the kind of bright line we do with the gas doesn't appear to be as attainable on the electrical side.
So, so Mike, Vic, we'll, we'll come back to you a little bit on that, but really what, you know, I think about is like, this isn't like a super big facility. 125,000 square feet is just physically not that big. So I think providing microwaves, hot plates in the cafeteria area sure would make a lot more sense than having people trying to stick a microwave in each of their dorm rooms, right? It's not like the U of I. You're not walking across campus to get a meal. You're walking a few hundred yards. You know, it's like. But that's what I'm saying. If you, if you set up an area for that, then you kind of contain it all.
That could solve it is not allowing. But I, I've never seen a stove that's not 220. So I think it's just.
It's something like that. Yeah.
Right. Gas lines that 220, can't be covered with this, except.
Okay. And that's why I said, let's move on to a couple more questions. So I know you guys had, from the PC CBA meeting, you're talking about small retail, like a snack shop or some retail within the facility. I know you guys prohibit alcohol from campus, but I don't know the next owner of this property will. Vic, do we have any concern at all about things like alcohol prohibition or anything like that?
They need a license and there's none offered in this, none available under our code.
Okay. So any future owner would have to come back for a liquor license as well.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, um, at the PCZBA meeting, the petitioner mentioned that the children of the either married couples or the caretakers, the full-time residents will be going to their school. Uh, I assume that's grammar school. How about high school? Where would your high school kids go? Is that a Stevenson?
Okay, so I don't know any students that. Our school, plus that would be pretty old students to have high.
Okay.
So Boston are going to.
So question to Vic there, do we care for, if there's a future owner? Um, like if we set this up.
They would be entitled to, I think that's in Stevenson's district, so they'd be entitled to go to Stevenson's.
Right. And then how does the taxation on that work? Does Stevenson get any revenue if, or because this is a church, they'd get no revenue, right?
Right.
Okay, um, that bothers me a little bit, you know, in a sense. It bothers me, I don't know how we can mitigate that, but as long as the kids are going to their school, it's great. But if somebody living there wants to send their kids to Stevenson, then the rest of the taxpayers are footing the bill for that, right? So it bothers me a little bit. Vic, remain silent.
No, I, I, there's, there's not much you can do about that. But that's just the way it's structured. And, and you know, again, given the number of married student housing units in this. I, I, I think that the number will be, I'm going to use the same word that Rita asked about before, modest. And it's not going to be that impactful, you know? Compare that to, you know, Northwestern University with 35,000 people who may have people, you know, having, you know, having kids going into the, the local schools. So I, I, I just don't see it being that impactful. When you have a big university, sometimes you have tax impact agreements where they make payments in lieu of taxes. The facility here, I just don't think has that same kind of, it doesn't put the same kind of dent in the, in the overall tax assessment base.
All right, moving on, a couple more if I could. Not sure they're easier or not. Is there anything prohibiting? Um, because these are nice units, right? Not that the church would want to, because I don't think this church does. But if, is there anything prohibiting a future owner from using some of the, these units as a VRBO or? Or something else?
That's, if you were wondering why all those provisions in that subpart five. You know, four and five are really focused on not so much what Day Spring is proposing, but what a next user might want to try to do. And so it's just not going to be, at least under the zoning code, an allowable activity. Could they try to do it surreptitiously? Yeah. And if we find them, then we, you know, we go through that process. But we've tried to set this up that it cannot result in a conversion from the type of dormitory set, dormitory room setup to a bunch of, of efficiency apartments.
Didn't I also seen here somewhere that we have to approve the sale? Um, if it's sold to assign this agreement to somebody else, wasn't that in here?
We do, that's in the special use permit. You'll see a section on transferies. And it does allow a transfer, but it also says that if there is a transfer without the village's approval, then Day Spring remains responsible for any violation. So, you know, if Day Spring sells it to, you know, to a a hotel, that's going to be a violation of the ordinance and Day Spring will be as responsible as the, the new hotel transferee.
Okay, thanks for that. Last, last topic, and trustee Tanucci was pointing out kind of the housing limit, limitation. I think Rita was talking a little bit about that. How do we, how do we balance the ratio between like students versus employees and staff? I think Karen mentioned there was like four or six units potentially that could be, actually I have one more question, but. Like what's the balance? Like, how do we, how do we prevent the, prevents the wrong word? You know, how do we make sure it's focused on students living in the dorm rooms like we envision it versus theological seminary retirees filling the place up or something like that? Like, what's the balance between that or how do we limit that? Like, what if they just wanted to fill the place up with staff members? Would we, can we control that? Do we want to control it? Do we care? Versus a full-time, you know, college having students there who are living there either full-time, most, you know, or three quarters of the year kind of thing. Because how do we, how do we limit that or prevent the? Not this owner, but again, like the future owner of this place from filling it up with like retirees, right? Or it's actually be a nice place for Chris Borowski to live, frankly.
Um, we can put that in that Chris Borowski's not allowed to live there. But is there, let me ask the question another way, is there a college tuition? So, I mean, you're going to be naturally, you, you're not going to have retirees living there because they're not going to pay tuition.
But there's no limitation to that. There's no way to control that ratio. Or is there like?
Well, we, we do not have anything in there currently. But if we're looking to to put some kind of requirement, we could simply state that the dormitory rooms are only available to students. And then there's a finite number of the, of the so-called dwelling units. We, you know, that did not seem like a a matter that needed to be addressed, but if you want it addressed, we certainly can provide for it.
Oh, you got a comment? Did you hear that, Vic?
I, I did not.
Section, section four basically says housing limited, only students, employees of the college or theological seminary and their spouses and children may reside in the housing provided as part of the college or theological seminary. I don't know what the words theological seminary mean legally. Does that mean retirees of the seminary, instructors in the cemetery or the cemetery? I'm sorry, the seminary. I, I guess I'm trying to get definition there and clarification. I get it, guys, I get it, trust me, I do. I'm just worried about the what-if down the road, you know, just kind of dot those i's crossing the t's.
Well, we didn't define the term in the ordinance. But you know, if you take the, if you take the plain meaning, it is an institution, looking at Webster's right now, an institution of secondary or higher education for training of candidates for priesthood ministry or rabinate. So, you know, it, it's fundamental role is education and training, not, not just housing.
Exactly. And that's what I'm concerned about. That's, that's hit right on the head, Vic, just the, my concern is the opposite of that, right? What if, what if Chris Borowski became a student? Not that you would let me, but what if I became a student and paid my course fees to basically get a great place to live without paying any Stevenson property tax? Chris Borowski would be very happy.
That's why I was thinking I'd love to go to Pepperdine.
You'd like to put a what? Sorry?
I'd, I'd love to go to Pepperdine and look over the Pacific Ocean.
Right. I get it. You know, I guess that's my concern.
I do, Vic.
It's just my concern, whatever the, you know, the tuition's cheaper than the property tax. I could tell you that, right? It's gotta be. Um, okay, and that was it, I think. I thought I had one more question, but I don't. I'll, I'll pass the microphone and let some of the.
Before we leave that, you know, you did raise the question, if you wanted to, we could in the text amendment include language that right now it reads under that sub-paragraph five, dormitory rooms, which shall be on-campus housing rooms used for living and sleeping that lack cooking facilities. We could say, uh, used by students or enrolled students for living and sleeping that lack blah, blah, blah. So if, if that's, if that's a concern, that would be my suggestion for the conversion of this to a bunch of people who are suddenly going to be deemed staff just so they could live there.
Anyone else worried about this? Are you worried about it? No? Dave, are you?
I don't worry much.
I, I understand, I understand where Chris is going insofar as the world is changing rapidly. And if it's, if it's the, you know, migrant situation, if it's, if it's immigrant situations, whatever. Charitable institutions frequently will take people in. Private parties take people in. I, I think that's where you're, what your concern is.
Well, you hadn't crossed my mind, actually. I was really seriously thinking about the retirees from the church who could become students to really get a really good deal on housing. Because you're not paying property taxes. You now move this thing into the charitable, the charitable group and you're not paying Stevenson property tax on it. And, and what if, you know, you had two or three kids who did want to go to Stevenson, living in the the married couple or the, the suites, if you will, whatever the caretaker units are. That makes free Stevenson education, right?
Trustee Jamil, do you have concerns over this?
No, I'm okay.
That's a no, I.
Yeah, I, I, just for whatever it's worth, I mean, adding the four enrolled students with respect to dormitory rooms. I don't think, and, and I'm not able to, to see the representatives of the school there, but I don't think that that does anything to their plans. But it may at least temper some of the concerns that trustee Borowski is raising.
Uh, we have no concerns with that, Vic. Uh, this is just better. Okay.
So I'll, I'll add that again. I think that it, it, it probably is a remote concern, but now it's even more remote with that language.
All right, I just one last comment if I could, Vic, thank you for that. There's a, and kind of answering Rita's question as well. There's a big chunk of this building that remains undeveloped. And I know they have to come back to us to develop that piece of the building, I think, the interior of it. I think that's part of our plan here. Um, and that also is a big question mark in my head. Like, what does that other half of the building ultimately end up being? And what does it look like? And that's why I'm a little bit, you know, kind of just, just cautious about the way that we set this up, right? But having said that, and you guys may not believe me, but I love the concept. I love the idea of your guys' church moving in there. And I think, yeah, I'm all for it, actually. I just wanted to ask a bunch of questions. I don't want to give you the perception I'm not, because I really am, I think it's a great idea.
Vic, you want to take that one too about how we?
Yeah, I, I mean, they, they actually have submitted phased plans as to when they're going to be doing it. So if you look at the, the plans, we actually know largely what they're going to do with most of the property. There will be, after the phase one, there, there will be a big chunk of it that's still well underutilized, but if they want to change any of those plans, they're going to have to come to us. So, you know, the, the, the lion's share of the building is spoken for by the plans, although not all as part of phase one. Karen, am I misstating that in any way?
No, that's, that's correct. And, and actually the lion's share of the work would go on in phase one because all of the interior and extra.
No, their systems are going to have to be done then.
Yeah, so I'm. Um, most, I think would maybe at least 75% of the expenditure and the overall work would be, would be part of phase one, even though, you know, some of the actual build out would remain for phase two. That we, we have, we have a floor plan to show pretty much full utilization of the building.
And then he, Chris, I assume you're done? Okay, just making assumption. Kent, any?
All, all I need to say is I believe this is an excellent use of a distressed property and I have no further questions.
Dave?
Yeah, I agree with Kent as well as I, first of all, I just want to say welcome Day Spring and thank you for coming along, Grove. Um, I mean, you've already had a great impact as far as the vandalism that's been going on. So you kind of, you know, stopped and now it's great to hear that there's a plan here to stop to that decay of building and actually add something positive to the community. So, uh, looking forward to you guys being here.
Trustee Jamil?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, with that text amendments, I just want to make sure that we are not micro-managing the privacy and the ownerships of the people who are going to manage that theology or college. So otherwise I'm okay with planning commission recommendation to approve it.
All right, I think that's, yes. Rita?
Good.
Okay, so, so Vic, can you help set us up? There were a couple of things. You know, so someone's going to make a motion, but I need you to help us with that motion.
What I think we landed on. In the text amendment, um, that's the number one, that's, that's the one that's number 13 in your packet. Under subsection E5, we're adding the, um, the words for enrolled students after the, the dormitory room. So it says dormitory rooms, which shall be on-campus housing rooms used for enrolled students living and sleeping. Students, incidentally, is with the S apostrophe, if you're wondering the, uh, the grammar on that. That was the only change to the text amendment.
Okay.
And then.
Can we?
And then, and then let me, let me cover both and then I'll, I'll suggest a motion.
Okay.
And then on the special use permit, the change would be. Now I've lost it. Oh, uh, adding a new subsection for E as in Edward and re-lettering everything after that. And E as in Edward would read special events. Activities on the property shall be for educational purposes only and limited to students, faculty, staff and their guests unless a special event permit is issued by the village board in accordance with the requirements of the village code. So those are the two changes that reflect the discussion tonight. And to press motion first for the text amendment, that would need a second and it would be a roll call vote. And then if that passes, you'd need a motion for the special use permit. And that would be in need of a, a motion, a second and a roll call vote.
Somebody want to make a motion for the text amendment? By trustee O'Connor? Not going to buy.
Second.
By trustee Tanucci. Um, as amended, uh, per Vic, roll call.
Can I ask a question, Vic?
Yes.
Um, I think, I think there's enough votes here to pass this. I'm thinking of abstaining from the vote mostly because I know one of your members very, very well. And I think, you know, I don't want to present any conflict of interest, but I'm definitely in favor. So should I, like, I'll, I'll just.
If we have, if we have three I votes, your abstention will go with the I's. And that would result in a passage.
Okay, thank you. So Madam Secretary, being called me last, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, um, trustee O'Connor? Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Trustee Gaten?
Aye.
Trustee Jamil?
Aye.
Trustee Borowski?
I'll abstain.
Okay, motion carried. Um, and then now it's the approval of the special use. approval of the special use, um, as amended, uh, with the language that, uh, that Vic provided us. Somebody want to make a motion to approve?
No move.
Moved by trustee Tanucci?
Second.
Second by trustee O'Connor. Roll call.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor? Trustee Gaten?
Aye.
Trustee Jamil?
Aye.
Trustee Borowski?
Abstain.
Okay, motion carried. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Looking forward to seeing this completed. Yeah. Thanks for all you're doing. All right. Um, looks like trustee Borowski is going to be doing a lot of talking tonight.
Oh, the bees, yeah.
Yeah. So, um, this next item on the agenda is about apiaries, right? Is that, did I say that right?
Apiaries.
Apiaries and beekeeping. So we have a, this is really for discussion, right? We have a draft ordinance in front of us. And, um, I kind of think that, uh, I mean, I don't know if, Chris, if you want to take the lead on this or we just turn it over to Chris with his comments.
Yeah, let's say a few things and I'll, you know, so this would, this is for discussion only. We're just looking for some staff direction based on some residential inquiries on allowing this and a fellow Chris. He has brought this, wanted to. So, um, currently our, our code does not allow, um, apiaries or beekeeping as an accessory. Out as an expanded. Prohibits it essentially in typical residential lots. So the ordinance that we put together, trying to strike a balance by promoting the pollination and the environmental benefits of beekeeping, but also, um, to protect the neighboring residents from potential impacts that the bees may or may not have. Oh, we try to put something on paper to give you guys something to think about and react to. And, and I guess I can kick it over to.
I've got some comments. Yeah, I've got some comments. Um, for those who don't know, I've been keeping bees for probably 45 years. I know a little bit about.
Chair is in the room. Did, did you hear that?
They're in Arizona.
Go ahead, Chris. Sorry. That was bad.
In Michigan. I've never done it in Arizona. Um, a couple of things that people, uh, first of all, I think the wording in this document is, um, is way too complicated for what it needs to be. And I think the requirements on the residents is, is just way too oppressive is too strong of a word, but I think the requirements within this document are just, are just too much. Um, just by way of information, I was doing some research. Um, the Illinois, uh, the state of Illinois requires all beekeepers to voluntarily mandate, it's actually mandatory, but you have to register your beehives, your, your apiary with the Illinois, um, Department of Agriculture. It's a requirement. Um, so I did a little bit of homework. Uh, well, just to back up, the state of Illinois has a, a, an apiary inspection program. They have the state broken up in regions. Each region has a bee inspector who's assigned. They will randomly inspect your beehive. Or you can call them and ask them to come in and look at your bees for any kind of consultation on any issues or to just give you a general health check on your, on your colonies. So the state of Illinois has that requirement. It's a free registration. It's a free service because the pollination and the disease transfer from bees is obviously very important. So they want to make sure that there aren't, you know, diseases sweeping the colonies or people moving stuff around like they're not supposed to be moving them around. Um, you can't move beehives out of the county without notification and approval. You can't move them out of state without approval because of all the bee diseases that are out there. Um, so having said all that, um, there are 256,000 households in Lake County. There's 267 registered apiaries in Lake County. So when you do the math on that, whatever that ratio is, it's like point 00015% or something. Actually point 015%. Um, and you do the math on Long Grove homes, if we have 27 homes and the statistics follow, we'll have about two and a half or three beekeepers within Long Grove if they follow that statistic. Okay. So the issue is not a real big issue. If we have two or three, or even double that, and you have five people keeping bees in the, in the, in Long Grove, it's like kind of nothing. Uh, some areas within the, the village, uh, think about areas like the fields of Long Grove. Um, Royal Melbourne and the golf course, you know, you could put 50 beehives on those properties, put a snow fence around them and you never know they're there because you could surround them with growth, with, uh, with prairie, with, with woods, you know, so, um, so I think the number of beehives is kind of something I wanted to kick around with you guys tonight because I think the limit is a little bit skewed. The city of Chicago allows every resident to have five beehives on their lot. So think about that for a moment. And their only requirement is registered with the state, which you have to do anyway. And if possible, it's recommended to put a six foot barrier, a flyway in front of the beehive so that the bees will actually fly up instead of horizontally, which is, um, you know, which is kind of, kind of customary, if you will, on a smaller lot. You want the bees flying up instead of horizontally. Um, so, you know, if you think about the city of Chicago being able to put five beehives on a particular lot, you can imagine that you could put a whole bunch of beehives in one small space on your property. You know, four beehives basically fit on a pallet, a four by four pallet. So that gives you the scope and scale of it. It's not a very big scope or scale. Now granted, they could get tall. They could get to be about eight feet tall. You typically don't go higher than that because it's too, they're too heavy. You don't want to lift 75 box, you know, 75 pound boxes of honey down or move those around. Um, so I think, you know, generally I'm really concerned that uh, this, the limitation on the number of hives is too restricted, too restrictive. A hobbyist beekeeper, oh yeah, one more, one more statistic, sorry. Um, of the Lake County apiaries that are registered, 94% of them have less than 10 beehives per apiary. And on average, the average register, registration is six beehives. The reason that is, is because one beehive doesn't do you a lot of good. Sure, you can have one beehive, you get some honey out of it, you're real happy. But beekeepers or hobbyists like to play a little bit. They want to put different species of honeybees in the different hives. They want to have one or two or three or four beehives that are producing honey for them. They want to have one or two where they might want to try raising their own queen bees as an example. Or they may want to try like different variations of, of species, like there's, there's all different kinds. There's like Russian, Italian, Carnolian, there's dark, there's all kinds. Um, so you play, you, you want to have that ability to see what works best for you in your particular situation and setting because they all perform differently based on the climate and the environment. So that's why I'm saying like, one beehive is not enough. It's good. It's a start, but it's not enough. You're typically going to have four, five, six, and that's why that average number is like six, because people can play a little bit. They can move their hives around. They could do their own breeding, or maybe if they have a couple of colonies that aren't doing well, they combine them and put them into one. So I, I think this is just like far too much, um, of a, of a code. I understand why the staff and, and legal would want it, but to me, I think it's just overly complicated. I think you do have to have a setback from the property lines because you really don't want to put it up against your neighbor's fence, right? That would be kind of unfair, right? So setback. Put it somewhere in your, on your property that makes sense. And the problem is with bees, every situation is different. Um, I told Rita earlier, the beehive wants to face south because it gets the, the south sun, warms the hive up. The bees come out earlier in the spring. They clean their hives out earlier. The snow on the front of the hive melts faster. The bees can get out of their entrances faster. So that's, that's part of why you want to orientate your beehive so it faces south. So think about everybody's property. You don't all have a great spot to put a beehive facing south, but, but that's why you try to mitigate it. Um, like in my, in my case, let's say in one apiary I have, had, I moved them into the wooded area and then they got infested with beetles. So I had to bring them out because the beetles were tunneling into the mud. And then they were coming out and infecting the hive. So I had to put it into a sunnier location. So you get into all of those kinds of situations. So if you build a six foot fence and put a beehive behind it, it may not like being there and you don't know it until you actually put it in and play with them and move them around a little bit. So that's why I just think it's very, very, um, cumbersome to require a big structure in front of the hives. And again, I think if you just have setbacks and move those hives more centrally located away from the neighbor's property lines, most of the neighbors will look at them. They're going to freak out a little bit though, and oh my God, bees, but, but honeybees are very defensive. They're not aggressive. Everybody thinks about the things that fly into your Coke can on your patio. Those are the, the yellow jackets and the wasp and the things that bury themselves in the ground. Those are very aggressive. They're wasps. They're not honeybees. Honeybees are, you know, they're not going to go after people unless they literally run into you by accident. They don't want to go into your Coke can. They, uh, they're looking for nectar. So I, I, I think just making this onerous on the, on the homeowners is a little bit too much. I think, I think people need to put their hives where it makes sense on their property. Recommend to screen them, of course, but I don't think we need to inspect people's properties to go look at their beehives to see if they're tall enough or in the right position because there is no right position. You, you have to move them around to find the right spot.
Can, can I ask a little question because I know nothing about beekeeping? So would you be willing to go through with Chris and edit this or come up with some recommended, you know, I don't know, clauses here, you know, if the wordsmith, that's why we have Vic and so forth, and then, um, bring it back to us for potential approval? I mean, do you know, um, Rita, do you know about beekeeping?
No.
Okay. Dr. Jamil, are you familiar with beekeeping?
I'd be very happy to.
Okay.
Know what Chris just said.
Yeah. Um, but really what I want to do is kind of ask the board, like, what's the philosophy? Is it, well, we don't like bees and let's put them, let's.
No, we get.
Or do we want?
We had a resident ask for this.
Right, right. I know.
So, and they, he didn't put the apiary in because we don't allow it. So, so how do we, and I don't know. I can't recall, you know, what size lot they have that we talked to them, but that's why, that, that's why this is before us. And then we find out that there's multiple residents in the village that have them. So how do we amend our code to make it legit?
Make it work? Yeah, I'd be happy to. Chris and I talked about this a while ago before, I think just when you first started. And we'd be happy to do that. My question to you guys is what do you think like the right lot size is to like, is there a minimum lot size? Like I said, the city of Chicago says five is okay.
Lots there, like an eighth of an acre sometime. I, I would have to say at least, at least an acre. I don't.
Half an acre is big for bees.
Five is the threshold for one acre. Is that the low point? And then we go up. There's a bit of a curve there.
Well, I hate that. I think you can go way smaller. I think you could put a beehive or two on a smaller lot, like even a half acre lot. I really do.
But there's no concern with the neighbors when you're, because you're saying the bees, I know that by nature they're, they're, they're not aggressive, but what do I tell them that has, has a kid that's highly sensitive to, you know, to, uh, the bees or something else that in now you're saying, well, hey, now my next door neighbor is going to, you know, give it even more danger to, to them.
Most beekeepers work with their doctor to have an epinephrine stick on site where the wasps living in your backyard don't. And really you're more likely to get stung by that, that the wasp that's hanging out than you are a honeybee. And, and that's really sort of the response, you know, I think, I think that's really true. Um, you can stand within 10 feet of the beehive, right smack in front of it. And as long as you don't jostle it, they will not bother you at all. That's we actually use beekeepers. We walk to the side or come around the back of them and stand right next to them and look into them because as long as you don't jostle the hive, they're not coming after you. They're defensive. They're absolutely not aggressive. And, and I get that, Dave. Trust me, I get that. I've had neighbors come up and go, oh, you got bees. And I go, here's some honey and they go away. So, um.
Hey, hey, Chris?
Yeah.
I have a thought. So I do worry about subdivisions that have the houses close together. They're clustered, right? And we have several of those subdivisions. So my thinking is, is that, um, you know, no one's asked us with a small lot size to do this yet. Why don't you stick with an acre? And if we come back and we hear that there's folks that want to do it on smaller lots, then we reevaluate it. Then at least we give the HOA a chance to regulate too, because there are a lot of them, the smaller lot sizes have HOAs. So I don't know how you feel about that. But look at it from that perspective. This is going from nothing to something, right?
Yeah, I like, I, Bill, I'm okay with it. I do, I really am. I, I just think, um, you know, I just think there's a lot of fear about bees that is really, um, is really misunderstood. Um, can I counter that proposal with something like a point nine or something? I don't know if that.
Doesn't matter to me what that is.
Something like that, something that comes close to that one acre.
Yeah.
Maybe there's a few more houses that could get in, but, but seriously, if, if Chicago allows five on a one acre.
Then it's where it goes on the lot is going to be the fun thing.
And that's why I think setbacks are important.
Right, we have setbacks. Yeah.
And you want to, you want to shield them on a screen. I mean, you really don't want people to know they're there. But they have to be visible enough for that state apiary inspector to find them. Because you actually, you're supposed to actually post a sign that says this apiary registration number and who it belongs to. But, um, uh, but, and you, you know, and it kind of warns people. It's to say, we got bees back there, but, but it's.
Is everyone okay letting Chris kind of?
I have a question.
Together. Yeah.
Um, as you know, many suburban subdivisions have lawn services that spray herbicides on their lawns five or six times every season. I know from talking with you that bees like to visit dandelions early in the spring. And of course that's a target of the herbicide.
For trees, yeah.
So if we put beehives in a suburban area, many of which have lawns that are herbicited six times a year, how does that affect the bees?
They're, they'll be bee killed for sure. There's no question. Um, my experience in Michigan, when they came out to spray blueberries, I'd be missing bees all the time. You get a hive that's doing great and the crop duster comes in, next day your bees are gone. Um, so that's a serious concern. There is a website that is a voluntary website where beekeepers can put a pin dot where their apiaries are. And theoretically pesticide applicators are supposed to check, um, where, um, where the, where the B apiaries are located so that there can at least be some discussion about how to save the bees without spraying the heck out of them. But yeah, it'll, it'll absolutely happen. There's no question about that.
Should we contaminate them?
Well, it depends on what happens. Usually the answer is no, because the bees don't make it. You know, they only make it back. Well, contaminates honey more is, uh, some of the, um, parasites that are out, uh, that attack the beehives, um, like the, the hive beetle will lay its larva inside the beehive. The beetle itself is too hard and the bees can't sting it. And then the larva gets into the wax and kind of works its way all through the honeycomb, leaving its vapor trail behind. And at that point you have to, you have to discard the honey. So some of the medications will cause you to waste some of the honey, but usually pesticides, there's really no way for beekeeper to really test that, but more often than not, the bees just die off.
Everyone good with, uh, letting Chris take a crack at it?
Sure. We're doing this because our ordinance says you can't.
You can't do it. People have asked us.
So why don't we just go silent on the ordinance that says no bee. Is, I mean, is, is this a problem? Are, are we, do we need to?
Apiaries are defined and allowed under the expanded agricultural use.
Yeah.
Category, which would prohibit many of these houses from qualifying for that because there's a minimum threshold of acreage allowed for that. So.
Why don't we just say nothing in the ordinance? Why don't we just remove that it can't, that you can't have them?
Since they're so. You can't have them. It just only allows them in and under expanded agricultural use.
And what's the permit application fee for that? Is there one?
It's a special use within the residential.
You got to get rid of the $90 every year or two, so that.
Yeah, we got to get rid of the $90.
That was my first thing, like, no, you can't even, we can't even manage it.
Get it for chickens too? We should get rid of, get rid of that for chickens too.
Uh, well, I mean, I, I just think that we should have something in place. Um, some level of regulation. Um, because if we don't and somebody puts one in, now what do we do as a board, right? And it's, they're not happy about it.
It's not fair for staff too. Staff needs to have the guidance, right?
Because you have nothing to regulate them without any regulations.
Yeah, but this would be a code amendment, so it has to go through the public hearing process. So we'd be looking for, I don't know, Vic, maybe help me out. We can, Chris and I can refine the draft ordinance that was presented. And then if we get a referral tonight to the PCZVA, bring that to them. Unless the board wants to see it first before referring it. I don't know what sequence of events we want to have.
I, I think it's a choice for the board, but if the board is. Good on having this proceed. We can just take that as a direction, notice it up for the hearing and before the hearing comes forward. Retool the ordinance. Um, and I don't know, Chris, if you're, Chris. Brozki, if you're familiar with the. The county ordinance, um, but it is far. Far less exacting than the draft ordinance in the packet. So that might also be a starting point. I mean, as I can't remember who said it before, we're going from. Uh, very restrictive to allowing it with restrictions, but we don't have to keep it at the. High ratchet level that the draft ordinance is in. And if, you know, if that language is there, it's going to be easy enough to put it in a form for the plant commission to consider.
So Vic, should we go ahead and refer this to the plant commission tonight or?
I, I, that's, that's up to the board, but I don't see any problem doing so.
Full motion to do it. Rita had a question for herself.
Just, uh, it's, it's a comment type question, questionable comment. This, as this is written, and I know you put it out there for us to comment on. It, it's says that a six foot high fence wall or dense shrub needs to be installed. And I don't think we allow anything six feet except buckthorn. You know, as far as something that's put there intentionally. And to your point, I just learned this tonight. You know, you think, okay, I'm going to have my hives here and you put your. If we allow six foot fence, you put your wall or your fence in as this thing suggests and the bees don't like it. You got to tear it down.
Do it again.
Or worse yet, leave it there, you know, and if, if you don't, if you don't have complete privacy, your neighbors have to look at all this stuff. It's kind of, kind of like, what are we doing?
Yeah. One, one thing about the fencing is that that isn't anticipated to be perimeter fencing in the draft. It was intended to be fencing of the hive area, which already is going to be. More interior to the lot than the lot line. And we do, we do allow the fences to go up that high if they're not in the setback.
Okay. I, 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 I get that. I know I, I, I didn't picture on, on the perimeter of the lot. I pictured it. Around the, the hives.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I mean, it just kind of looks stupid. I, I, I mean, I think it would be an eyesore as opposed to the little file cabinets that are out there.
Here's a, here's a fun one. Um, many HOAs don't allow fences. So.
Right.
So they won't even be, it won't even be allowed.
Build a super.
Well, well, then it'd be the, the shrubbery that would be screening it. But, but again, um, I, I think that. From the tenor of the discussion, we're looking to do something more aligned with what the county has on its books. And I, I think that we can certainly, you know, the, the two Chris's can look that over. I've sent the language to Chris Sparkman and, um. That can be the, you know, the, the starting point for a redraft.
Does she want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and refer it, um, refer to the plant commission. With the caveat of a redraft and, uh, we'll copy the board on it.
Okay. Move by trustee Barowski, seconded by.
Second.
By trustee O'Connor.
It's a voice vote.
Voice vote. Yeah. All in favor?
Hi.
Any names? All right. Motion carried. All right. That concludes our bees business tonight.
Except for beekeeping is up 25% in the county since coronavirus, by the way.
All right. Um. Maybe this one will be easy. Maybe it won't. There's a few items.
Saying there.
Few items left on the agenda. One of them is awarding a contract for the Archer parking lot drainage improvements. The bio swale. Yeah, I know. Um, does anyone, thank you, Megan, for being here. Um, anyone have questions? On that one?
Yeah. Can we, on Archer lot, can we put a penalty? A monetary penalty for, um, not completed by a certain date? Cause we've run into this before.
The contract, uh, Rita, the contract includes a completion date and the contract also references the state specifications. Which include provisions for liquidated damage that can be assessed if that completion date is not yet.
You got you. I can't, I can't understand what you said. You're kind of.
I, I think he's saying we've got it covered.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does anyone have questions?
Just we've had this problem.
Yes, just a sarcastic Chris question.
I know where that's coming because I have the same question, but go ahead.
How do we get into this situation? Like, why, why did we not have proper engineering done when we originally engineered the parking lot? Why are we revisiting this and?
Mine was slightly different, but yes, go ahead.
Okay. That was my question. Jeff, like, how do we get here? Why didn't we have this right the first time?
Well, I don't think Jeff was around because.
Jeff wasn't the engineer for that. That was, uh.
Mike trade, right?
Uh, no.
Okay. I don't know what that means, but okay. I guess.
We had different engineers.
It's a different engineering firm.
I remember Joe. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I don't know how we got there, but.
All right. Well, I'm going to leave my question alone then. Does somebody want to make a motion to approve?
No move.
All right. Move by trustee O'Connor. Second, second by trustee Tanucci. Roll call please.
Uh, trustee, trustee O'Connor? Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Trustee Barowski?
Aye.
Trustee Gaten?
Aye.
Trustee Jamil?
Aye.
All right. Motion carried. Um, the village engineers report, I understand that'll be very brief tonight, right, Jeff?
Yeah, absolutely. Very brief. Um, the village hall, the village hall parking or village hall expansion is moving along. They're doing the work on the existing.
Coming across.
Okay. Sorry about that.
I don't know if it's your speaker.
Any better now or no?
Maybe that's better.
Okay. Well, maybe, uh, let me talk just a little bit slower, but, um. Village Hall expansion, the construction has started, the renovations on the existing building going well so far. The road program, they are, the contractor brothers paving is going to build and resurface checker road starting this week. And, um, I'm still working on the schedule for the village hall parking lot, but that will come after. The checker road resurfacing project. Um, that was the, uh, the main updates that I had for tonight. And, uh, with that, I'll just ask for any questions.
Any questions for Jeff? Okay. Um, as far as, uh, we'll just go through the. I, I'm going to, no report tonight for myself. Trustee Brozki, do you have a report?
Uh, yes, I do. Just very briefly, I attended the, uh, housing lake, uh, session number two. Session number two was designed to share some information regarding statistics. For the Lake County housing, uh, situation. Um, really it was very limited information that was shared, but what's interesting is that the, uh, the population. Of Lake County in the last 15 years is actually decreased. But yet the number of houses, um, households has increased by 6%. And that's reflecting a trend of, um, smaller families per house. Um, uh, more, uh, you know, children leaving the house and mom and dad staying put as opposed to, uh, to moving. And they're retaining their homes. So over the last 15 years has sort of helped to. Exemplify exacerbate the housing shortage, um, within, within the county. Um, within the county, uh, there was 900 building permits issued in all of 2024 for residential construction. As just kind of a, you know, just kind of a FYI. Um, the point being that, um, again, they estimate we're short about 19,000 homes within Lake County. Which as I mentioned earlier, is about 10% of the 200, maybe 9% of the 256,000 homes that are already existing. And, uh, that's all.
Can I just ask a question? Um, how many homes are being built in Mundaline right now?
Hundred and.
It's like, I mean, a good portion of that.
There's like a hundred and.
Well, 100 residential units under construction.
Yeah. So wow. So we're going to blow that away.
Yeah. And you know what's interesting? Um, you know, Mundaline is having all the discussion about the, uh, the Mundaline High School and the expansion of the schools. The, um, the, I, I don't remember the, the guy's name. He's the. Lake County Education Superintendent, the guy. I'm sorry. There you go. He, he, he was at the meeting and he basically said, the problem is that they, they have enough capacity in the Lake County schools right now. To meet the growth. It's just in the wrong places. Right? Which is kind of interesting, but overall Lake County schools have plenty of capacity, which was really just mind, mind boggling. You go, really? You kidding? Right? He goes, no, we got space. It's just in the wrong place.
Got it.
Anyway, that's all.
Well, all right. Thank you. Any report? Trustee Gaten.
No report.
Uh, trustee Jamil, do you have a report?
Yes, I have a quick question to Dana if he's listening to me. I just want to get some clarification on this application, uh, whether that was filed for the. Shaitoum Bonfire and, uh, Bazaar Fall Fest on Saturday, October 5th at Brothers Field. I just want to know what was that confusion about because, uh, she's a resident here. Uh, I think, I guess she emailed me first. Uh, so I told to contact the village staff. So from there on, whether the Brothers Field has submitted this application and there was a. Date conflict there or whether the village, uh, website is not clear on the events. Uh, coming forward or whether the application process is not simple. I just want to know those two aspects from Dana.
Yeah, we, we did receive an application, but the, um, event location, um, Brothers Field, they. Called and pulled the application. From us. So it was no longer, uh, under consideration at that point. We actually submitted for two different dates and they pulled it for both dates.
Let me get this clear. So they submitted the application and. Um, after just, uh, uh, inquiries being done through the email back and forth between you and, uh. Uh, Jesse and, uh, uh, the communication or was it withdrawn before this communication happened?
Was the application received before the communication was had? Is that, was that your question?
Yes. Uh, we, I'm not sure the specifics, but. They submitted a partial application and we were in communication about. What was needed and I spoke with her multiple times about it and we were working on. Everything that was needed for it. And then Brothers Field pulled it because it, it wasn't working out for them. But there were no conflicts on the village's end with what.
The application they filled out was fine, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. It was mostly the, the business that, um, backed out and weren't able to support the event any longer.
So, uh, let me get this cleared. Dana, I'm still confused. I, I'm sorry to ask you again this one. Because, um, we need to be clear on this. Uh, so the brother field submitted an application. It was before the village board and then it, uh, to come up in the next meeting or whatever, uh, what the process we do. Uh, for the approval from the village board. And then immediately the village, the brothers field withdrew the application that was, uh, that is the position, um.
They withdrew it before the board meeting.
So the application was complete and then they withdrew it. That's the answer. Okay.
And, and they, are they considering it, um, for another year?
I think they might be looking at next year. It was the original applications for like 2,500 people with less than a month notice. So it was. Concerning to the downtown group and it probably would have been concerning to the board here as well. So we would try to get more details on that. And.
We actually accepted it late, later than we would. Um, but it had everything that it needed and we were willing to. Accept it and put it before the board.
Did it answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee O'Connor?
I'm for it.
Trustee Tanucci?
No report.
Village manager Sparkman? Okay. We do have, um, one other item. We need to go into executive session for pending. Uh, threatened litigation and acquisition disposition of property. I need a motion to go in executive session for those items. Moved by trustee Tanucci, seconded by trustee Barowski, seconded by trustee Tanucci.
Sure.
Okay. Uh, roll call, I guess, right?
So, um, trustee Barowski?
You want to?
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Trustee Gaten?
Aye.
Trustee Jamil?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
Hi.
No, it wasn't me.
No, do you normally click that when you do that?
Yeah.
I know.
Or automatically sign who's on there.
I got some people on, on sign.
Okay. So motion carried.
They did. Which one? I'm sorry.
How many, how many?
Now, what you could do is shut those doors.
Jeff and Mark, you guys can pop off.
Which one? Yeah, we did. Oh. It's, uh, appropriate. We didn't drain each one while you were in the bathroom.
Yes, you are right now, actually. They're all dead.
All right.
And then these are the ordinances on laxation. That's the last page. So I can.
Broadcast.
I'll find the feral power who comes in and moves. Really? It looked, because when they, when they split it. And it's how they propagate it here. It looked, because when they, when they split it, they go in and it's how they propagate it here.